...for our beautiful town of Poetry, Texas, tonight on March 15th. We will have two executive sessions tonight, which means it is closed to the public, so we'll probably remove ourselves and go back to this chapel sanctuary for those closed meetings. We welcome you and want you to feel heard, valued, informed, and connected to your town and its council. We welcome diversity of opinion and want minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also appreciate mutual respect despite opposing view. Right now, we have Evy Anderson serving as our fill-in secretary. Thank you, Evy.
Evy!
And she will call us, yeah, do the roll call. Thank you.
Councilman Terry Fowler.
Here.
Councilman Simeon White.
Here.
Councilman Brian Vincent.
Here.
Councilman Tom Anderson.
Here.
Councilman Mike Jaffe.
Here.
Mayor Tara Sutcliffe.
Here. Okay, a quorum is confirmed. We also have the privilege of having a local pastor, Pastor Kevin Kelly from Poetry Baptist Church here. Thank you for being here. We're gonna go ahead and stand. He's going to lead us in the pledge and then the invocation.
Join with me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Holy God of Trinity, we thank you for the gift and privilege that we have to gather together in this place tonight, first and foremost as citizens of your kingdom. We thank you for the privilege of the people who are seated up here, the mayor and council members, leading this town with pure hearts and a desire to glorify you, Lord Jesus. I pray that our conversations would glorify you. As Paul wrote to Timothy in First Timothy, that when we gather together, it would not be in anger or for disagreement, but it would be to lift up holy hands to glorify you, God, first and foremost. I pray that your Spirit would fall fresh, that you would give us grace in this place, and that we would glorify you in all that we say and all that we do and all God's people said. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, so under items of community interest, we do have a community work day on Saturday, this coming Saturday, from nine to five. Thank you. And so we'll be putting in some insulation. And on that note, we had a generous donation from Dale and Celia Armond to pay for much of the insulation for that. We're very grateful to them. Under G reports, the financial report for February end, we have a beginning bank balance of $23,289.23, an ending bank balance of $22,175.11. We had some office supplies to pay for, the newsletter printing, payroll for the city secretary, her last day was on the 24th. She is no longer with us. We will miss her. We had a special task. We asked Titan to pick up a mattress that had gone astray and was an ice war, so they did that for $25. Thank you to Titan. And then the website, electricity, and then we're, of course, paying utilities for use of this building at $50 each meeting. So, next...
On that, could I get a point of clarity?
Sure.
The 211 bill, there's a few of them, but for American Express, we don't have a credit card, so...
We don't.
What American Express is that, and can we get it moved to the town debit card?
Well, so that's a couple of questions. So, when Tom and I did the, we did the training for the treasury management, there's a secure checks on, so I have to go through, and every time we write a check, we go on to, into the portal, and we kind of pre-fill it in so that they know, hey, this check is coming. But for debit cards, there is no such thing. So, I was kind of alarmed at that. I thought, well, that's not cool. To me, that wasn't very secure. And so, the website was initially set up on the American Express, and then we ordered the custom receipt book through American Express. That is my American Express, and then we pay directly to that. And that is a matter of security. Imagine if the council wants to change that up, they absolutely could. It's just, I was alarmed when I saw that, and of course, that's, the website was set up originally under there, so it would have to be changed. But there is a measure of security with American Express, so, you know, they, you know, they have an excellent, excellent security fraud system alert, but then it's the safety of, you know, we don't have to pay for it if it's fraud. But on the debit card, there is a limit, but it's like $2,500. You could wipe, but, I mean, it has, it has potential to be really negative. Okay, on number two, reports on emergency management. I've asked councilmember Anderson to report on that. We both have been kind of working hard on that, but I asked Tom to speak to this.
Okay, I'll just summarize without getting into a lot of details. First, what we're doing or what's needed, and I guess there's, first thing is, is we're looking to how we can prepare for emergencies, like tornadoes, fires, floods, anything like that. And so that's what the emergency management system is about. One of the things, the second thing we want to do is learn more about the systems, the contacts, organizations, what do we do, who's responsible for what, and we're all still in the process of that. And then more specifically, what are our roles and responsibilities, is the mayor, the council, rest of the council members? And so if we have an emergency, what do we need to know, what do we need to do? Okay, where are we in this process? And it's not a simple thing. It's very complex, and it's taking us a while to get there. But what's the process? Well, first, we have manuals electronically that we got from Kaufman and Hunt County, which are very extensive, and Tara downloaded them onto flash drives for us, but I haven't been through them. I glanced at it, and I doubt that anybody else has yet either. I think we're gonna discuss it maybe next meeting. We've all, councilmembers and the mayor, we've all completed the emergency management courses, 100, 200, 700, 800, which were required. We've also, in discussions with Poetry Water, we found out there's 20 fire water fill locations. So if we do have a fire, well, there, we now know where the fire trucks can go and get additional water, and that was kind of a surprise. We didn't realize we had 20. We thought we had fewer than that. And then, lastly, we're trying to find out about information on, at this point, from FirstNet or AT&amp;T, about how we can have a cellphone alert system. And so we're in the process of getting information on that and finding out what it is, and then eventually have to bring that to the full council to talk about decisions. Okay, well, what have we learned? Well, we had meetings in both Kaufman County and Hunt County with emergency management people, and both of them, we reviewed the facilities, they showed us what they had, how it would work, we talked about the organization, names, contacts, even somewhat about FEMA reimbursement, if we have a major incident, how can we get reimbursed by FEMA. We did that in Kaufman, in the town of Kaufman, at the emergency management center there, and in Hunt County, we did it with the folks from the emergency management homeland security people there. There were several of them. And again, we reviewed what the facilities are. Now, one thing we learned at Hunt County is they have a much larger facility, central facility, in Commerce, which is, of course, also in Hunt County, at A&amp;M, and they've got, A&amp;M Commerce has got a lot of money from the A&amp;M system, and so they've got a very extensive emergency management system there, and so we still have to go there and visit, see what's there, what can we use, and what would be of value. And then so, let's say, well, what's next? Well, Tara and I are trying to get set up to take another hands-on emergency management course called G-300. It's also required. There's one coming up in Mesquite towards the end of the month, and we're trying to get registered for that. And so that's a real three-day hands-on, how does it really work, as opposed to the book side of it. We're all gonna, we're also gonna meet in Commerce with A&amp;M Commerce folks to see how that system is set up for emergency management. And we're also in the process of getting the data and the cost so we can evaluate the FirstNet, AT&amp;T cellphone alert proposals, which would be a way we could alert citizens if there is a major incident, such as a fire or tornado or anything like that. Right now, we don't have a good system, or any system, so that's one of the things we're looking at, but we're not ready for a decision on that either. So Tara, is there anything else you can think of that we did?
I think you covered it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you covered it. Thank you.
So there's more to come, is the answer.
Yeah, we're hoping, maybe next month, we'll have that on the agenda to speak to some of those decisions. One other thing, the AT&amp;T, so this was a special type of phone for emergencies, so that in case of emergencies, it doesn't get clogged in the 911 system. So they, if, for elected officials and emergency management personnel, they get the front of the line, so to speak. So it's kind of nice, because you can imagine, if there were a severe incident, then that we couldn't get through. And so, in order, that's what, they sign up with this special service, and we've been looking at, and that'll be next month. We'll, I've been working with some of that, but... All right. So number three, planning and zoning committee report, Kathryn Hartwick.
With a P. I'm just gonna say it now loud. I've been letting my main beat miss bounce for months. It's hard, with a D.
Thank you for that correction. I did not know. Thank you.
(coughing). I should pick this up. I'm a little better prepared this time. And, you know, I just want to say that six months ago, when I raised my hand, I did not know what a long-haul project this was gonna be. But it's important, and it's important that we do it right. And we are pedaling as fast as we can. We've got a 74-page discussion draft that we're working from. We are, the biggest stumbling block in my mind that we've run up against is that most of the towns want to grow. They want big business, they want development. We don't. So we're having to go line item by line item to make sure that it's going to address the basic premise of keep poetry, poetry. We want to be rural, that means we don't want Walmart. Does that mean we don't want, you know, mom-and-pop stores? We want to be able to protect the freedom to run a business out of your house, but we don't want it to get out of hand, and we always keep in mind that traffic is an issue because of our roads. So, right now, we're working on a discussion draft. I'm gonna be really careful not to say anything about the weather, because that bit me last month. Both ice days fell on our meeting day. We hope to have a working draft for the town council before the next council meeting.
Excellent.
You can't hear me? Okay. I'm so sorry. Usually I don't have that problem. We're working very hard to have a working draft to give to the town council to review before the next council meeting. Once you guys have had your say on it, pushback and all that, then we can schedule the public hearing that's required. And the public hearing is gonna need three weeks' notice in all the venues that are required to give notice, so that we can get that back. Trying to keep small business and exclude large businesses, and I'll just throw Walmart out as an example, I think we all know where the nearest ones are, and that's fine in my book, is, it's a nitpicky little thing that we have to go through, and some towns don't want riding stables. We want to be able to have, you know, stables. If somebody wants to keep a horse in town, we're fine with that. So while we're working on that, I just want to leave you guys with this. We started this, the advice we got took us down a rabbit hole. The legislature in 2019 made some changes that took away a lot of the town's ability to make, to effect change in the ETJ. So, and I love this quote, "No man's life, liberty, or property are safe when the legislature is in session." So we're trying our best to get you something as quickly as we can. No word about the weather.
Thank you, Kathryn. They have been working diligently. They meet nearly every week, so thank you to Kathryn and all of the members on the P&amp;Z committee. We're just so grateful. Okay, number H, consent agenda, the minutes for the February 15th regular town council Do we have a motion to accept these as written?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as they are.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made by councilmember Anderson and second by White to accept the minutes from February 15th. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, on the regular agenda, on number one, we have discussed and considered the spring cleanup for the town scheduled for Saturday, April 23rd. We had a volunteer who was pointing out the obvious, that probably wouldn't want to do it on Easter weekend. And so then that kind of moved it down a little bit. So, we, I have a mock-up, it's just a draft, any of this can change, but it's just an idea. And basically, I noticed that Kaufman County had a cleanup, and I kind of took some of the things that they, because they've done this, and we have not, some of the things that they had on theirs. So that's where some of this came from, because I figured, you know what, they've probably experienced a few things. And so that, basically, when it says, you know, they have here for their cleanup, it was basically what items accepted free of charge during cleanup included mattresses, furnitures, appliance, trash, and recyclables. So that's why that's on there. And what not to be accepted, barbed wire, bricks, concrete, construction materials, roof, roofing, shingles, brush, boats, travel trailers, and dead animals. So, I do have a citizen who's been talking to me about shingles that his neighbor has, and it's an ice war for him. So I took that, the roofing shingles off of there just for him, honestly. So, but construction materials, we don't, you know, we don't want someone just throwing their construction items in there, leftover, that's for them to pay to get rid of. But hopefully, we will have, and on here it says, volunteers are encouraged to adopt a mile of poetry roads and grab a bag and, you know, clean up. I know on my road, I've seen some things that's gotten blown out of someone's vehicle, and I was like, wow, my road could use some TLC. And so I would encourage all of the council and, you know, myself, to get involved, and we can make, keep poetry beautiful and clean, hopefully. And so, and I know, I think councilmember Jaffe has talked about this, you get that momentum going, if it, we have a momentum of litter, it just adds to. So if we can stop that and halt that, I feel like we can go a long way to keeping poetry beautiful.
So what's the exposure to the town? What are we paying for, what are we not, that kind of thing?
Well, in this very chamber, we had our, we had two of our trash vendors pipe in and say that they would donate, one each, so that was Titan, and one was AWT, one dumpster each. That's on video record, that they would do that.
Has that been discussed further?
It has not. So...
I think the shingles thing's probably part of construction materials. I know that it costs extra for, you know, when I've taken stuff to the dump here, I've had to pay for construction materials separate from other stuff, so shingles might have to go back on the list. But yeah, I'd like to see what our solid waste providers are willing to do, and then maybe we can finalize the list then.
So, we would need to be able to have the, in order to get a good turnout, you have to, of course, advertise, and marketing's part of that. So, I would hope that we could, and maybe there's a council member that would like to reach out to one of the, our solid waste vendors and remind them of their promise on the dumpsters, that...
And I'm sure Yolken, I mean, I'm not involved in this process, but put it in the water bill. I mean, would be, if we're already doing that, then might as well remind people there. The only comment that I have on this, and of course, I love the idea of cleaning up our town, and it's something that I like to do whenever I get the chance anyways.
Simeon, I can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear? Okay, well, I'll talk a little louder then. I was just gonna say, I love the idea of cleaning up the town. My only thing is that I hate the idea that we'd have to check people's IDs or their poetry water bill whenever they're dumping off trash, and that means that somebody has to sit by the dumpsters all day long. I wonder if that's really necessary. I mean, there may be, maybe a couple people that would do that, but I would hope that just the honor system would be okay for a cleanup day, but that'd be my thoughts. Perhaps I'm an optimist.
And again, that requirement was also on the county's list, and I do know that Blackjack, when they did their, they have their station for recyclables, they also require that. And we had a volunteer who was willing to man it for the day. So, it's, and of course, this is suggested seven to seven. So, I mean...
Any of the other councilmen have thoughts on that? Maybe we, maybe we should have the ID. What are, any thoughts?
I think if we could volunteer, if we could staff it with a volunteer, that'd be great. You know, I would be willing to be one of the volunteers to be out there.
Man the dumpster.
That's right, man in the dumpster.
Well, and I think, you know, I mean, yes, honor system is great until someone breaks it, so, I mean...
If I were one of the solid waste vendors, I'd also like some assurance that if they are doing something out of the goodness of their heart, that it's not being abused. So I think it's a good stewardship of their volunteerism, assuming they are going to be volunteering it.
All right, well, in that case, I don't see any problem with it. Do we need to make any motion for this, if we're not using town funds?
I guess paper, maybe, but we've had paper donated, so I don't know if that's town funds or not. But it is a service that the town can offer to our citizens and our community, and so I think that it's a good one. So, are there any other suggestions? You suggested it going out in the water bill, I'll have to check with them to see if they're good with that. As long as it's tri-folded, they probably wouldn't mind. I mean, it's a folders. It's like 1,060 copies now in the water bills, which has gone up, so that's good.
No, the only comment, I'd like Simeon's comment, but I would do, as Reagan said, trust but verify, right? Because I think there will be some, although the trashy people probably aren't gonna be inclined to do anything about it, so... But the other would be to make sure that we give credit to whoever it is that does supply our containers, because, you know, we want to encourage those vendors in our town and let people know that those people are putting back to our community if they do that, and I'm guessing they will.
Okay. You want to call then?
Well, yeah, I have Brian's contact information. Who's the other one, AWS?
AWT.
Okay. Well, if somebody will give me their info, I'll call and ask them. Are we looking for dumpsters or slide-offs?
We're looking for the largest dumpster, the roll-off, so I think 30-yard is the largest one that's available.
Okay. But we'll also have to make sure that they'll take mattress, if we're gonna put mattresses on the list.
Right.
And we're gonna have to make sure they'll take mattresses as well, so, you know, that's why I was hoping that maybe we already had discussions, but, okay. So, yeah, Mike, if you could determine what, determine what they will be willing to accept. Thank you.
Are there any other comments on our spring cleaning day, community-wide? No citizen comments? Okay. All right, so I guess Mike Jaffe, councilmember Jaffe, is gonna reach out to both AWT and Titan and find out what they will and want to allow, and hopefully, we can get the 30-yard, two 30-yard, one from each, one from each.
Well, I mean, is there any reason not to contact Kim, too, with CRS?
They don't have those.
Oh, okay.
My understanding is they just have the two, four, six, eight-yard dumpsters, not the big roll-offs.
But if they're willing to dump...
But if they're willing.
Yeah, if they want to make a show, I wouldn't turn it away, even if it's a dumpster, it's something, so I'll reach out to them as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, moving along. On item two, discuss and consider designating certain town roads as no-through trucks over 33,000 pounds GVWR routes, penalties for violations on residential road, and the need to purchase road signs. GVWR stands for gross vehicle weight rating, which is on every vehicle. It is, my understanding, that it is the vehicle's weight when not loaded. I think we discussed this last meeting or the meeting before. This came about because I was talking with Sheriff Terry, he was saying, look, if you put a weight limit, then you have to have scales. They're very expensive and costly, time-consuming, they have to be regulated, you know, they have to be regulated. So he said, you know, if you just put no-through trucks, and then if you do the GVWR, now I added the GVWR, because we covered that with the solid waste, is, you know, you've got an even playing field, and you know, because it's on the truck's identification. So you don't have to do a weigh, it's already there.
Yeah, to clarify, so gross vehicle weight rating is the rated capacity that that vehicle can legally carry, and so they enforce it in situations like that based on the placard that's on the door jamb on the vehicle. It doesn't matter how much you weigh that day, that's what imposes it. So in a pickup truck, it might be rated 20,000 pounds, but you may be hauling, you know, 30,000 pounds worth of cows, so you're illegal, but the weight rating is still the weight rating based on. So, yeah, all we'd have to do is open the door and look at the little placard, and that would tell us whether they were in or out.
So I think that would be very easy, well, fairly easy for a constable or sheriff to do that, is the thought on that. And we don't want to penalize our farmers, right? We're trying to encourage agriculture, so we aren't trying to penalize them. So when he suggested no-through trucks, I thought, you know, that makes me think of all kinds of trucks. So if you designate it as a certain specific GVWR, I think that is more clarative.
So can we go back over, Tara? I think we hit on it last time, the roads that were considering this, because we don't have any ruling over state roads, right? So we can't do 1565 or 986. So which roads in Poetry are we talking about?
Well, I know that 2326, I had submitted to Judge McNabb a picture of a diesel fuel truck that was very concerning. It's not something I typically see, but I did see it, and I did take pictures of it on 2326. They have no sense being there. And maybe it's a shortcut, but I don't think they should be in a residential area with all this farmland. So, I mean, that's a hazard. And so, and I guess the roads that they would consider as being a cut-through, perhaps, I mean, certainly if you have a destination, that's exempt, but a cut-through road, they shouldn't be there. And unless we have it posted in an ordinance saying so, there's nothing we can do. So if we're going to have a safe place for our citizens and take care of our beautiful town, we certainly don't want a fuel spill like we had on 1565 happening in the ditches on one of our county roads.
So are you talking about just the red, every road that's not a state road?
Possibly. Why not? Or, you know, that could get expensive for buying the signs, but, you know, there's certain roads that are dead ends that may not be, make sense. If it's a dead-end road, you know, maybe not. If it's a dead-end road, you know, maybe not, but it's...
Well, now, we live on twenty-four thirty-four, which is a cut-through road between nine eighty-six and fifteen sixty-five, and, and there was several years ago, a sign-up, I think by the county, that said no-through trucks, but it's not there now, I'm not sure what happened, and it did seem to have some effect in slowing down or cutting down some of the larger trucks going through, but the sign, for some reason, has gone now. I called the sheriff and asked about it, and anyway, I don't, at the time, he's, this was several years ago, he said they couldn't enforce it. It was a, almost a suggestion. So, we can put these up, I'm not sure, since we don't have any authority for judiciary, judicial authority on it, I'm not sure how it's gonna work, but I know before, the county wouldn't enforce the one on twenty-four thirty-four, you know, and we were strongly in favor of that, and again, we'd like to have that on twenty-four thirty-four, but I'm not optimistic that it'll be enforced.
Did he tell you why he couldn't enforce it?
Yeah, he said that the sheriff's, was deputy sheriff, said they pay taxes, they have a right to go on any road that's a county road, which it is. Now, for some reason, there was a sign-up, and then it was come down, so I'm not sure why, but the sheriff said they would not enforce it. This was several years ago.
Now, I will tell you, I'm talking with Sheriff Terry within the last month, is there are two roads in Greenville, I think Molden and another road, excuse me, he said that they have this particular no-through trucks, and they do enforce it. Would you like to speak to that?
When, when did you speak, when did you have?
I'm sorry, you're asking me?
So, we have an expert in the house.
It was probably ten years ago.
My name's Terry Jones, I'm the new sheriff since twenty-one.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Yeah, there is, there is some research that we've done on that, and I spoke with DPS deeply in it, in the licensing weight, there's a lot of things that varies on the weight of a vehicle as far as like your rock haulers and things, and there is certain ways, it basically falls under DPS, and so, kind of took us out of the loop on some things, but the way I've researched, from what I'm understanding, is that, you know, if y'all have got it posted as an ordinance, then it can be enforced, but it's the through on the trucks. But the thing is, is you're gonna get, and I, I know everybody gets tired of hearing this, but four officers covering nine hundred square miles? Yeah, I mean, I get it, but, and so, you know, the chances and of, you know, what we can do and what we can't. If we have quite a few trucks going through, then that's somewhere where I can put an extra patrolman and look at it to slow it down with the signs, but there is stuff, y'all have a lot of building going on out here that's coming, okay? A load of lumber going into a construction site, nothing you can do.
Well, they have a destination.
Right.
They have a destination, that's very different.
But, and you will get that, you'll get a deputy, and we try to correct this, but that is not familiar, you know, with, with an ordinance or law, and you're gonna get that statement. That's where, get your pen out, because this is very, very important. Nine oh three, four six one, one eight four three, that's my cell phone number.
The last four again, please?
Nine oh three, four six one, one eight four three. My lovely bride back there, she's ready to throw something at me again, trust me. But this has been going on for years, I've been in law enforcement here for, you know, nearly thirty years, and I give that to everybody. Everybody's got it, it does not bother me, you know, for somebody to call and get ahold of me, I spend most of my time in trucks, so that's the best time to get ahold of me. But we'll try to help you if somebody gives you that information, if you speak with an officer or something like that, and I'm not telling you that he's wrong, I may side with the officer if, you know, if he's right, but try to get his name if you get information like that, and kind of contact me and say, hey, you know, what's up with this? We'll be happy to work with you. We know y'all are trying, you know, y'all are gonna be, a lot of growth, and as far as inside growth is what, I heard the lady back here speak about trying to hold things off, understand that, I'm that person, but there's a lot of responsibility now that y'all, I know y'all saddled up, and hats off to you, we'll give you a hand in any way, form, or fashion. I do want to throw this out at you, when is the cleanup day?
April twenty-second?
Where's your dumpsters gonna be located?
Twenty-third. At the Camp Grand Church, we did get permission.
Okay, that's, that's actually, is that in?
It's Kaufman.
That's in Kaufman, okay. Over on this side, I'm not sure if I could do it in Kaufman, I was gonna offer, I have a work, inmate work program, they're not violent offenders, they're usually the guys that does certain things, and on our cleanup all around the other end in Hunt County, I will have them guys come out there with a, usually if I can, with a detention officer that works, they mow and stuff all over, they will unload, help load, stay there and work. So, if y'all have cleanup days, stuff like that, we will try to work and help y'all if we can. New program I started up when I took office, but would, would love to help if we can.
Are they available on a Saturday?
Ma'am?
They're available on a Saturday?
Yes, they're, I can kind of, their schedule, I can kind of bend pretty good. Now, mowing, mowing time, yeah, they're kind of on my schedule. See him smiling, but, but mowing time, we have, they're pretty busy, because I, we mow a lot of, a lot of things out in the county, but yes, we would, we would like to help. Some people worry about it, where you have, like them walking cleaning up roads, we probably do it on fifteen sixty-five or some of the other roads, just because sometimes people get alarmed. Trust me, I'm not putting anybody out there that's a danger. I can't tell you once, never runoff, but we have never had one runoff, most of them are guys we know, it's just minor offenses. But we'd love to help with that, and if you need anything, got my cell phone number, we'll work on, once y'all get the signs, I'll revisit with the county attorney, Judge McNabb, well, I think he's...
Retiring.
Retiring, and then...
Clay Rankin, maybe? Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Terry.
Sorry, I shouldn't have to ask this, but I didn't get your name.
Terry Jones.
Jones?
He's the Hunt County Sheriff.
Yes.
And could I ask one more question, just real quick? For the through trucks, even with, with it being, you know, maybe enforced, because I know y'all are kind of overworked, right?
Well, with, with work.
But do you think at least the suggestion of it, like Mr. Tom Anderson was saying, would motivate people to, to stop?
I think it would, personally. A decent, a good sign that is seen in a good spot, yes, and then, whether we write or not, kind of gives us a reason to stop and talk to them and say, hey, see the sign? Next time, it could be different. And so, I, I think so, I really do. Like I said, it's, feel, you know, feel free to call, I, I'm not, I'm not a traffic person, tell you that, been a county officer for many years, that's not my specialty, but I do have a Tennessee to call DPS and people who knows, and I have a lot of friends that will give me the answers, okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Terry.
So, Emily, for legally, so my understanding, I think in reading some of this, is we could potentially have a penalty of maybe five hundred dollars for that incident?
Okay. That would be the max for that kind of offense, and then I want to visit with the sheriff afterwards, because if he's gonna talk with the county prosecutor, maybe we can work back into that deal of, an understanding with county of us being able to enforce our ordinances there. So, I'll talk with him afterwards, because that sounded pretty encouraging, but yeah, five hundred would be the max per day.
Okay. So, just on the, so on the sign, if we had, maybe we added under penalty of five hundred dollars, and that might actually turn some heads?
Yeah.
Because we want to keep our residences safe, and we don't want diesel trucks...
Yeah, and I was just gonna echo what the sheriff said too, we prosecute in a lot of our cities, and we do that ordinance all the time, and so, that, it's something we see a lot, and so I think if we have a good relationship with wherever we're setting up our municipal court, it won't be a problem as far as enforcement.
And that is the first step, setting an ordinance, I believe, is the first step, because you can't enforce something that isn't an ordinance.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So, then, then do we need an ordinance to be drafted?
So, just direct me to draft an ordinance on this topic.
In that ordinance, are we going to find the roads?
So, do we, I had him bring the map, so we could look at it up close. Do we want to do it for just the pass-through roads? And I think each sign was, I tried to get some estimates on the signs, they're anywhere from like, well, a custom sign is like sixty-five dollars a piece, so it might be that we want to limit it to perhaps the pass-through roads, and then maybe the one, the roads that are, you know, more dead-end, maybe that wouldn't be as important as go-around, but what's your thoughts on that?
Let me ask, Emily, could we pass an ordinance that is for all non-state roads enforceable once we have signs posted?
Yes.
And then, as we have the funds, the desire, we post the signs to...
That's a good idea, I like that.
It would work if you were, if it was one road, where you said, once the sign's up, it's now effective. It gets tricky if you're gonna say all roads, once the sign is up, it's just more gray area, so I would do an ordinance per road, if it's going to be one of those that's not effective until the signs erected.
Okay, so could we have one ordinance and then an addendum to that ordinance for each road?
Yeah, so, do we, we would have to initially, though, state some of the roads that we would need to, to have for the ordinance?
Yeah, no, we would need to identify the roads, but we could say the ordinance is not effective until signs are erected at whatever locations.
Sure.
Can we just say all the roads and then erect whatever signs we want? Are we required to erect a sign for every...
That's what I was saying, it's, I've seen it where people are doing it on one road, and they're saying it's not effective till the signs erected, and that's clear, everybody's looking out for the sign on one road, but if you're saying it's all these roads, and you just need to wait till a sign is up, it's just a little bit more murky, is when does enforcement day start? So, I would, I'd probably just do one ordinance per road until we, we know exactly, if that makes sense.
So, I guess we need to discuss, okay, so Councilmember Benson had mentioned two forty-nine, I mentioned twenty-three twenty-six, we can't...
Twenty-four thirty-four.
Twenty-four thirty-four. I think we just make a list, right?
Twenty-four fifty-four.
Twenty-three twenty-six. Okay, so, should I go up to the map?
Yeah, I can't see it from here.
Can't see it from here? Okay. Can I take this? So, we want to be, I mean, I guess we want to be as thorough as we possibly can, and use your time wisely, right? So, so here is two forty-nine, then it turns into twenty-four fifty-eight, and that alone would probably take a minimum of three signs, I would imagine. Is there a recommendation for how, how many feet you let go between?
There's a text on manual that states how far apart signs should be, so yeah, there's a manual to look at for that.
Okay, so, but for the ordinance, two forty-nine goes all the way up to the county line, then it turns into twenty-four fifty-eight, so two forty-nine and twenty-four fifty-eight, and then I think, Tom, you had mentioned twenty-four thirty-two?
Twenty-four thirty-four.
Twenty-four thirty-four, okay.
Tara, there's two places, one is at fifteen sixty-five, and the other one is at Munson Road.
Right here.
Turns into twenty-four thirty-four.
Okay.
Because it's a cut-through from two seventy-six to fifteen sixty-five.
Yes, I've, I've had several complaints from that, actually, and I've had people tell me, where happened to our sign? It used to say no-through trucks, so...
So, one would be down by Munson Road, and the other would be?
Here, possibly, okay.
Fifteen sixty-five.
Someone tabulating how many signs this might be, and then...
We'll need to know how far apart the signs are, need to be before we can tabulate the number.
Well, we know at least, we need one on each end, possibly, so, and then I think this is a big cut-through, this twenty-four fifty-four is a huge cut-through, so that would need to be there. I believe, big cut here, and this is a, you know, these are, this is horse country here. Any other thoughts?
Can I ask the sheriff a question about enforcement?
Tara?
I think he's an expert.
Can I ask?
Oh, absolutely, so Sheriff Terry Jones, can you?
It's ahead now, you don't even have to come up here. If, if we shut down County Road two forty-nine, the, the reasoning for that is gonna be from dirt trucks that go to County Road two forty-three. So, essentially, what we're doing is, is we're saying our roads are more important, and the citizens in the city is more important, because we're gonna push those to the other county roads of the unincorporated people. So, my question is, if they, if they come down a state highway, and we own three hundred eleven feet, can they cross that three hundred and eleven feet to get to a road that's no longer in the city limits? You're, you're, we're gonna ask you to monitor three hundred and eleven feet, because all we're doing is shoving them to another road.
That's, like I said, there's certainly, I checked the DPS on, but that's a common point, so okay, you're gonna have, you're, you're right, we're gonna shuffle them, we got a good thing, and some of it's gonna help, some of it's just put family, you know, it depends on how hard you want to take it. And like I said, we're, I guarantee them, if we, we can't be there all the time, but you're gonna, it's gonna be, when you have a road that's really high traffic, and if we can get somebody out there, we got a problem, you know, where we get in this is usually building something, they were, like, you're building a development down here, or they find a shortcut to go through, that's kind of the purpose of what I feel that is important, y'all people tearing up, but as far as, you know, your everyday work, stuff like that, we tell them, talk to DPS, and sometimes we can't get them to help us in hard work.
So, there's three sand pits in Portry, not in the city limits, in Portry, that's built every neighborhood in a hundred mile radius. Those trucks are still coming, and yeah, I agree that they're tearing up the roads, and we need to try to regulate it, I'm just asking on the enforcement side, what are we gonna be tasking you with by putting those signs up?
Well, I mean, we can just do what we did, I'm not gonna test out later, if we have a problem, drive them down here, make them slow something down, something like that, but to stay down here and enforce, you know, to create, it's not likely, it's probably not, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, I'm a terrible politician, because I'm just gonna tell you the truth, and that's just, that's the way it is, but, and I, I tell you, I want, I'm gonna go ahead and bash, I'm a waste officer, okay, that's what I do, but, so, we will help, we will try, and we'll try to get a problem, to deal with that problem, to slow it down, or maybe move it to a different location. What I'd like to do is instead of them cutting through and tearing up a county road, if they could run down fifteen sixty-five and get two seventy-six, that's what you're trying to do, you know, you're trying to get that done, instead of that one mile difference of tearing up y'all's roads, because the commissioners, I mean, I kind of feel for them from time to time in a way, because with the growth that's coming on out here, if you're a commissioner, you got all these people kicking on you about the county roads, and why they're so bad, but if you try, if there's a development going in down here, can you imagine trying to keep your old top road fixed with, if trucks running up and down, you can't stop them because they're building. So, it's just trying to fix all the problems that is, you know, your cut-throughs, your guy that's trying to save four dollars or something, or some fuel, you know, then they'll just, so just whatever, whatever we can do, but we're limited.
Commissioner's office, then Kaufman has stopped trucks and told them to back up, go around, or turn around, go around, and also Randy has strayed as well. It is very frustrating to our road commissioners, and, and that's, in my mind, that's exactly what we're trying to do, not that we, you know, I, I'm a business owner, I don't want to put anyone out of business, but we don't want them tearing up our county roads when we have a state-kept road that is, is meant and designed for heavier trucks' traffic, so...
Okay, so with that, with that spirit in mind, not shutting down businesses, I'm all for the two forty-nine, so the next road south of two forty-nine is County Road two forty-six. We own, we own three hundred and eleven feet at fifteen sixty-five, would we be okay with them? It's, this is a compromise, would we be okay with them cutting across our three hundred and eleven feet to save them from driving?
You said two forty-six?
Three forty-six. Uh, hold on, I don't want to misquote.
Thirty-four eighty-six?
No.
What road are you...
Two forty-nine, two forty-six, it's the one right across from the water tower, so that's the one that leads to the tarrel sand pit.
So, this one here is not, is...
No, no, one north.
This one? Which one are you referring to? So, that one is not in our jurisdiction?
Well, we own, we own this much of that road.
A little section.
So would we compromise and allow them?
Now, 246, it's a rock road, yeah, and actually-
I'm looking for a compromise.
In the thorough-
Because we're fixing to stop them from going anywhere north without going all the way back to 205 and around town, or back to a state highway.
I do have a thoroughfare meeting coming up with Simeon.
One question, I have, the governor's, the governor's first calling, you know, different signs, and I understand it's, like I said, it's not like, the governor's calling, hey, they're running all over these other roads, they're going, they're gonna move, they're gonna move.
So, that one is not primarily in our jurisdiction, however, it is a gravel road, and in the thoroughfare meeting, that Councilmember White and I are to go to, hello, Tess? I'm here?
That kinda sounds like a hearing aid.
I don't have one of those, thankfully.
I don't either, but I've heard them.
Hello, can you hear me, okay. All right, so, so we will be, that's one of the things is, we'll be discussing is, can we, that gravel road, 246, can that be paved to alleviate some of the future growth traffic? And so, but that, most of that is not in, in, even in our ETJ. But, and then there's also 245 down here. So, they did, made a beautiful job of, of redoing what, that road, this road here, all the way to 205, and it's beautiful.
But in, in the spirit of discussion, what Terry's saying, I, I would be very willing to make that a very low priority or non-priority as far as putting a sign on it. You know, that way, it does still give the traffic a route to go.
Well, it's almost, do we, do we advertise that this is the truck route? We prefer you to stay off our roads, because we can give you a Class C misdemeanor, please use these other roads. I mean, it's, it's a compromise, because like Terry said, they're going to-
Oh, yeah.
-spread out, and they're gonna find whatever route that doesn't have that sign on it.
Right.
I was thinking the same thing, and I don't know why we wouldn't call all the developers as well. Like, I'd give the sand people a call, if I can find their number, and just advise them on where to put it, especially if we're gonna put this up, and we want them to be informed. I mean, we want them to follow whatever regulations we're putting up, so, communication, I mean, that'd be great.
So 2430 is where Catherine and I both live, and there's a sand pit back there that's not advertised, but it's well-known by anybody building buildings, or building house pads. There is no other way to get to that, that sand pit.
Right, so that yours wouldn't have one?
So you just leave it?
Well, that is a destination.
Even though they're destroying that road?
That is, that is a destination.
That one, we're, we're discussing a "no-through" traffic, that would be a destination, so that wouldn't-
So we wouldn't be able to-
Wouldn't be something we could enforce.
But this road is in terrible shape, is not meant for 80,000 pounds, which is equivalent to 1,000 cars, it's just not meant for that, wasn't designed for that. Now, we are working on trying to get this development to help pay for some of the refurbishment on this road, but that's off-topic, but anyway. But, yeah, the, the agenda item at hand is, okay, which roads do we want to have a "no-through" truck? And again, that's not destination, you know, we understand people have to build their homes, they have to have trucks deliver things, but this is through traffic. And both Randy and Erin will tell you that they see it all the time, these guys are just, you know, they're trying to cut through to save a few minutes.
Did somebody start the list of, of roads?
So, did we have, okay, so we had 2434, I think we had the, 2458, 249, 2454, so they would have to, you know, use the main roads there. But, you know, our job is to protect our town, right? So, is there, in 2326, was there any, any others that the council would like to suggest?
I think those are the main ones, and we see where the traffic diverts.
Okay, 'cause I think we're gonna visit this. I think, and, and I'm with you, 249 and all that needs to be regulated. I think they're gonna go north on 1565, and they're gonna cut all the way across the north side of our city to get back to 1565, to go north to Josephine, to all these developments that are up there. We're just pushing them somewhere else. I mean, I think, it's a good starting point, but I think we're gonna find ourselves regulating roads that get back to the main state roads.
Well, 2326 is one of the few-
Which road is that?
That's, uh, thank you, can you point to that? That one there, that's the main cut-through road, and that's where I follow that diesel fuel truck.
Twenty-three twenty-six.
So I, I'm off of that road, so I, you know, I, I see that a lot, and so if we have that "no-through" trucks on that, they'll have to take 1565 or 986.
Yeah, hopefully that will funnel them up from, you know, 1565 to 276, yeah.
Kevin, what's the county road, the northwest corner that cuts back to all behind Grandy Verde? That one needs to be shut down too, then?
Left side.
Far left side, no, at the bottom, at Grandy Verde.
Bottom there.
North, keep going, the last county road, what's that one?
Forty-four sixty-eight.
Because if we don't shut that one down, then they're gonna, they're gonna loop around that side of the city.
Oh, you're right, what is the name of that one?
Forty-four sixty-eight.
Okay.
So essentially, we've done every road except the dead-end?
Yep. Okay, so Kevin, you're, you're slotted to speak to this agenda item, Kevin Sinkovich?
I'd like to add, one more, I'd like to add 323, because that's, that's the road I live on. Now, there are two load zone bridges on 323 and 321, going back out to 2486, but still, we, we have rock haulers going across those wooden bridges, and already-
That's a danger.
Yeah, so I-
That's a danger, yeah.
I think that, let's add 323 to that, please.
Okay, so I have on my list 249, 2326, 2454, 2434, 2468, and 323. Did I miss any?
Twenty-four, I thought you said 2458 earlier, is it 68?
Twenty-four sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight.
Oh, and then, of course, 249 turns into 2458, so it's actually two different, although it's poetry load or ling-line, leageline road, according to the old-timers, but it is divided efficient, 249 into 2458, so, so that would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different roads.
Emily, for the ordinance, will you need to know what county each road is in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and I can get that to you.
I mean, it's pretty easy, the four digits are Hunt, the three digits are Kaufman.
Yeah. Yeah. So is there, Kevin, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, when you come up with 1564, 1565, that's 2452, is it 2458?
Oh, it's 2452, did I not have that?
Yeah.
So, how did I get twenty, oh, 2452 turns into 2454, is that correct?
Well, it actually keeps on straight, the, where everybody turns, it's 2452.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you're right, 2452, but when it turns, it starts 2452.
Okay.
And that's, that's a lot of what we suppose, just someone coming down here, like-
They, they'll cut right through a residential area with horses and everything, yeah. Okay. Okay, so Kevin, did you have anything, you, you signed up to speak to this topic, Kevin's, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, all right, and there's no others? So do we have a motion on that?
Yeah, how should we word that, Emily?
You can just direct me to draft a motion based on comments during this agenda item, and I've got it written down. If you want it to be more detailed, you can.
All right.
But it can be that simple.
The only other question, why 33,000? Where did, where did we come up with that? Is that our trash truck, GBWR?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so this would stop, if we could ever stop them from picking up trash in our city, now they would have to drive around our city, correct? Like the waste management that continually picks up trash.
Well, that would be another avenue, because they are supposed to have the smaller trucks in our area.
But I think they're, I think, I think before we write this, I think it needs to be 33,001 pounds, because their trucks are rated at 33,000 pounds.
So I think with, under, under the-
Or exceeding 33,000.
Premise that we're doing, don't they have the right to go to a destination? I mean, I think they have, I think they're still gonna have the right to haul 80,000 pounds through our town to pick up a trash can, because it's a destination, so it's not gonna help.
This is just the pass-through, yeah. They have to do their job as a destination.
I mean, we can't punish the ETJ, which is-
Well, I'm not trying to, but that's exactly what I'm trying to clarify, if they, if they are no longer allowed to do business in the town, and it's outside, do they need to find another route besides cut through our town?
Yeah.
The destination now is around our town, is what I'm getting at. Now, we do have ETJ inside of our highlighted lines, and, and that's all for, I mean, that's, you see the nightmare that Chief Jones, and Sheriff Jones and his deputies are gonna have to do, but, but 2400, you mention it quite often, there is another route to 2400, but they're not gonna go all the way around to Blackland and come back around to service 2400. So is that, at that point, is that a destination? Or are they cutting through?
I don't know, I know Waste Man-
You're talking about her.
Waste Management has way more lawyers than her firm, and 100 more firms, so we're probably not gonna scare them.
You're talking about the town's solid waste vendors, right? They, this, it would not be applicable to them if they're performing the service under the contract.
They're not under contract, so what we're talking about, they're not solid waste vendors.
Yeah, if somebody's not a solid waste, the, the question is, if somebody's not a solid waste vendor registered with the town, but they have somebody on one side of the town, and somebody, or just outside one side of the town, and just outside the other side of the town, can they cut through the town to get to them?
No. They would have to find an alternate route.
Because they're not a vendor within our town, so they're not gonna, not, the ordinance would be applicable to somebody who's not one of our vendors.
So we're protecting our roads.
I like that idea, I'm just, as the pragmatic part of me says, that's probably not going to be something that is all that enforceable, or all that enforced.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know till we try.
We'll see what we can do, but yeah, I like protecting our roads, I like protecting our citizens.
So do we have a motion?
Sure, I make a motion to have Emily draft us an ordinance based off of our discussion of a regular agenda item two.
Okay, and clarify "no-through" trucks over 33,001 pound?
I'll say, in excess-
In excess, over, okay, over, okay. And the penalty for such, do we, okay, so Councilmember White has made a motion, do we have a second?
Should, one, real quick, should we specify that the penalty is up to $500?
Well, we discussed it, so I think she can add that in the draft, based off of the discussion.
It was, it was the up to more than the 500, do we wanna say the penalty is 500 or up to 500?
There, yeah, the judge actually will decide what it's gonna be, so it's always gonna be written, it's up to 500.
Good deal, thank you.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion by White, and it's seconded by Anderson. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously.
No, I'm, I'm a no.
Oh, you're a no, okay, I'm sorry, you abstain, or you're a no?
No.
Okay, so we are four to one, one negative, okay. Number three, discuss and consider a template cease and desist letter to send to solid waste ordinance violators. We have a sample here that Emily drew up, and it basically says, date at the top, has blanks, and it says, "Via email or certified mail return receipt, requested number," and then it has regarding demand to cease and desist, "Mr. and Mrs. Miss has come to my attention that solid waste vendor has operated within the Town of Poetry without a permit and violation the town's solid waste ordinance number. Please immediately cease and desist from any action that constitutes a violation of ordinance number, per ordinance number," that's a blank, we'll fill it in. "No solid waste vendor may operate within the Town of Poetry without complying with the town's requirements and receiving a valid solid waste vendor permit. If you need further information about how to apply for the permit, please reach out to blank. If you do not comply with ordinance number blank, the town will be forced to seek enforcement of all remedies at law and in equity against solid waste vendor. Please be advised that the violation of ordinance number blank carries with it a $500 penalty per violation. Sincerely, Patricia Adams, Town Attorney for the Town of Poetry."
I'd say I, I like the idea of having it come from the attorney rather than from the mayor. I, I think it carries more legal significance, and I guess, as far as I'm concerned, I like this like it is now. I don't see anything that's a problem, and I'd make a motion to accept it.
My only comment, Tara, and I like the letter too, is I would encourage us to send a copy of the ordinance when we send out the violation, just to sort of show them what the ordinance is, so-
Yeah, that's a great idea, yeah. Okay.
And, and maybe we consider, I'm, you know, they're not on trial, so they have the right to come back and say, "We disagree," but maybe we throw in a picture of them on our road, or whatever, and just say, "Hey, here's the deal, if you wanna have a discussion about it, we can, but we believe you're in violation."
Well, I do know that the ones that, all of the ones that were operating in our town did receive a copy of our ordinance.
Right.
Already sent that out, so they have it. I mean, unless there's a new one.
Probably in little bitty strips.
[laughing]
Because it went into the shredder, so I would just, I would attach a copy, personalize it with their name, our attorney, put the ordinance on, send it to them.
Yeah, no problem.
Letter mark.
Yep.
Okay, do we need a motion?
Yeah, I guess I'd make a motion that we accept the letter with the stipulations that Mike Jaffe just raised.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Anderson, seconded by Vincent, that we consider this template a cease and desist letter with the amendment of sending a copy of the ordinance to the offender. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number four, discuss and consider designate certain town roads as non-hazardous waste routes. I believe this was a citizen's concern, is that right? Do you wanna speak to that?
That's the information I have.
Okay, so we had a citizen requesting that, I'm not, we have no background information on that.
Now, there's, there's hazardous waste routes that are designated for true hazardous waste, you know, nuclear, chemical, biological, diesel, you know, that, I mean, that, that kind of thing. So, Emily, maybe you can guide us, is, is that something we can do, one? And what are the stipulations around it?
So I haven't done a lot of research into this, just because I wait to get direction from you guys before I go and do a bunch of research, or spend a lot of time on something, so I haven't done a lot of digging. I will say that I, I, a lot of it's gonna be regulated by state law for truly hazardous materials, so some of it just may be overlapping, which a lot of cities do that in their ordinances anyway, just kind of copy and paste state law, put it in your ordinance, "Hey, we're enforcing it too," it's just kind of a double reminder. So I don't know how necessary it really is, I can do a little bit of research into it to let you know if I think it's really something you guys, you know, should spend your money on getting drafted.
Right, okay, 'cause, I mean, if there are people truly bringing hazardous waste through the town, that is something that we really need to deter.
And then if, if there is a state law violation, it could just be as simple as going to the county and letting them know, and then it's out of our hands, so, because if it's truly state law, county can take care of it.
Now, Brian, you're saying hazardous waste, like spent nuclear material, but are you talking about hazmat, just hazardous material?
The, the citizen asked that we address hazardous waste, so I'm trying to get-
And that's a really good distinction in what we're talking about.
I haven't seen any, I've seen hazmat running up and down our roads, but, you know, like fuel, or-
Right, right.
You know, flammable, or whatever, or even Amazon, their vehicles are marked, because they're carrying nickel metal hydride batteries and things, they gotta have a little placard warning you, but I don't know that I've seen any, uh-
I don't think I've seen true hazmat, or hazardous materials, my dad was a truck driver for most of his career, so-
Now, I have done some reading, and Teslas are actually hazardous materials, so we could consider banning Teslas.
But, but I know that as far as true hazardous material, they have to follow a specified route.
Yeah.
So I think that we would be more concerned with the, the material that is not on that specified route. If, uh, let's see, that's, there's no one who's signed up to, to talk on this.
Well, here again, are they doing deliveries to our town of hazardous waste, or are they just passing through?
I'm wondering if this-
I haven't ordered hazardous waste.
I'm wondering if this came about because of the, of the fuel spill that we had, I'm just one, I mean, that's, I, it may have, I don't know.
If, if the person who requested this to go on the agenda is here and would like to address it, even though they're not signed up, could we do that?
Mayor, if you choose to allow it, you can. Mayor, if you choose to allow it, you can.
Since we're at a loss, absolutely. If the person who sent this in is here and present, I would invite you to speak. I don't think there's, the person's here, so.
Okay. So I would like to ask Emily to look into hazardous material versus...
Yeah.
...regulated material.
Yes.
And if there's some option that would make sense for us to take for the town.
Perfect. Do we need to take a vote on that?
Um, you can make a motion to direct me to research what Councilmember Vincent just reiterated.
I so move.
Okay, do we have a second?
All right, let it die.
Okay, moving on. Number five. Discuss and consider action on installing town limit signs to points of entry for the Town of Poetry.
I guess my first question is, are we talking about the main roads coming into poetry or all of these dead end roads that also come into poetry? I think it's not reasonable to take every conceivable road, but I do think it's reasonable to think about the major roads coming into poetry, which is not exactly what it says, but I think that's the most reasonable approach and cost effective.
Can I ask Tara, where did this come from?
This was a citizen request.
Okay, so do we have, what is their, their argument for or the motivation for? I mean, are people getting lost? Do they not know how to get to us?
Well, especially since we have on the agenda slotted to see what really is our town. I think it's, you know, we had talked about it early on and haven't really addressed it, but there are people who would like to know, okay, when, where does our town limit start and where does it end? So I think it's pretty common sense. I mean, most towns do that. So, and I, I think if we do, like Brian was just mentioning, you know, the main entry points, or Tom, I'm saying main entry points, the common sense, you know, we need to know where we start, you know? So on 2458, for instance, okay, a lot of folks don't know, it's right at that, at that corner there, and that would actually help actually our road commissioners, I believe.
So Mr. Jaffe, it sounds like you have some negative view of it.
I don't know this, I'm just trying to figure out what it would accomplish, you know? I mean, if it, if it helps somebody, I think it's great. If, if it's just for the fun of advertising poetry, I'm against it because I don't want anybody to know where poetry is. So I'm sort of on the other side of the fence. I just, you know, if, if it helps us in some way, like, you know, this is the Hunt County line and that's why the pavement stops here, or, you know, something like that, that's fine, but, you know, just for the sake of dressing up the town, I just, I'm not a fan, but, you know, it's not about me, so.
Well, a lot of folks do, I do get that, okay, where does the town end and I have to pull off the map. So it would give some direction to a lot of folks who ask questions, because they want to know. Our citizens want to know. We've got guests that want to know, so, I mean...
Let's hear from the citizens.
Okay, so before we get to that, so we do have here just a, I think, all of you, and it's in the packet, just a mock-up what it could potentially look like. I don't know if it's, you can see that in the pot. That's just one example of what it could look like. So we do have Shelley Smith would like to speak to this.
Hello.
Hello.
I think it's a really good idea to put up city limit signs. First of all, it lets our citizens know that they are in the city of poetry. It lets strangers driving through that they're now in a town, and a town typically has their own regulations and their own ordinances and that kind of stuff, kind of clues them in, be it better behave yourself. And it also shows a sense of pride in, in poetry. And I think the whole reason that we're doing all of this, there's too much effort to it to not let people know that this is poetry.
Thank you, Shelley.
Shelley, will you take a question? So I agree, you have several good points. One point is to let people know they're in the city, right? Because we have some question about, so in your mind, with all the ETJ inside those lines, do we need to post a sign at every single spot that the city stops?
I wouldn't start with that, but potentially it might have to be. I don't know.
Yeah. Because Tara said, you know, all cities have city limit signs, and they do, but most cities look like a cloud with a fluffy center and an exterior that can catch intersections, and we, we look like Swiss cheese, so I'm wondering what that looks like in your mind as far as implementing signs?
Well, that does make it interesting, definitely. I think the people coming up from Terrell, the people coming in from Rockwall, Royce City, all that sort of thing, it's a good idea to let them know and kind of give them a heads up. I think ultimately, eventually, maybe there needs to be some designation about this side of the road is in, this side of the road is out. But that's further down the road. I understand we can't buy 2,000 signs.
So would you like to see maybe four geographical, we'll call North End 1565 and then 2458, 986, and maybe at the intersection of the Autobahn named 3486 over there?
Definitely those. There's a couple coming in the back way that...
2400 in back there?
Yeah, you know, like where, where it's only like a mile of the road, but the road goes on, you know? So there's, but there's people that don't have a clue that they're in the city limits of poetry, and I think these signs would at least cause them to stop and think and maybe find out. So, yeah, that's my thoughts.
Good point. Okay, Patrick Smith? Okay.
You know, and I might as well throw my opinion out there because it coincides with Ms. Shelley so well, is, yeah, I like the idea just because it, I think it just is going to add to the civics of the town in general, kind of like flying the United States flag, which I do. I've always liked those sort of things. I especially like any chance we can get to show that we're an agriculture-based town, so I like the fact that we have a little tractor on here. I want anything that really just pushes this in people's mind as much as possible, that every time a developer drives past here, that's what he thinks of. And I like the, even the population, I think, makes us look small and makes us be thought of as that. So I kind of like the way you have it set up here. I don't like signs all over the place, though, and I feel with Jaffe to some degree, I don't like unnecessary things, so I think maybe, yeah, about five is what I was thinking. The two routes to Rockwall, both side of Old Poetry and the route to Terrell is what I'd imagined. I don't think even in the distant future, I'd want to see so many signs down every dead road that goes into the ETJ, but that's just my thoughts on it.
So what was the cost of these signs?
They're $64 with free shipping.
Okay, and, and what are the DOT regulations as far as size, parameter, how they're mounted, and who pays for the expense of mounting these signs in the right of ways, especially on the state roads?
Well, the only, well, I guess there would be two state roads, the rest of them, if, if we went with his recommendation of five, we would have three that are in our jurisdiction. It would just be up to maybe some council members and some volunteers to, you know, get some concrete and post hole digger and put her in.
I agree. I like your attitude, but I disagree because I think that's taking on liability on the city that we put a, a post in the ground. I would like, I mean, at some point...
Well, you have to call 411 first.
Well, I'm saying that we put a Schedule 42 and 38 to drill some pipe in the ground with, with concrete that could cause damage. So I, I just want to do a little more research, because the, actually, I'm counting three state, state roads. 1565 on the north end, 96, and of course, 3486 is now a state road as well. So there's going to be some regulations from DOT on where and how those signs are placed, and we might have to pay them to install it. So I'm not against the signs, I just think we need a little more knowledge of the expense before we pass anything or go further into it.
And my only comment is, if we keep putting out corn, we're going to end up with hogs. And I feel like we're starting to define an HOA, you know? I feel like we're starting to put a lot of decorations, and I appreciate and respect Shelley's comments and others like her, but, and I am proud of poetry, but I'll tell you, I don't need a sticker on the bumper of my car. I work with my neighbors, I, I help my neighbors, I support and encourage. So my, my words of, you know, would be that, I, I just want to make sure we don't get too carried away with decorating because I think it's the heart of the community that I'm here for, you know, the fact that we do help each other and support each other and not the decorations. And I'm, I'm absolutely serious and have been for 21 years that I don't care if anybody knows where poetry is. I like it out here, and I'll tell you, it's, advertising is going to draw the eye of things that at some point we're not going to like, or maybe some people do want that, I don't know. I don't.
Well, thank you for your opinion, Mike. And of course, there's newcomers that haven't been here 20 years or more like, like you have, and they are proud of poetry, but I don't know that a sign is going to cause them to make a decision either way on that front.
Well, I know that when I looked up my property in poetry, then the Zillow listing said, in the highly desirable community of poetry. So, you know, that, that advertising's already out there. Myself, I'm, I guess I'm not opposed to the signs, but what, I would really like to see us as a community, and it seems like anybody outside that sign would then be somewhat excluded from the community. I know that as a council member, I need to be focused on what's going on inside the town, but I, I have a heart for the entire area and not just the 300 or 500 feet on each side of the road. So it's, it's something that I would really want to think about, because I, I wouldn't want to start setting up the lines of demarcation that says, this is, you're in the community, you're outside of the community. So it's something that I would really want to give more thought to.
Well, I will say, the solid waste vendors sure would like to have it, I think.
And I appreciate our solid waste vendors, but...
It becomes very difficult for them, and it would be helpful, and especially if we, you know, I mean, we have four now, but if one retires and another one comes in, I mean, you've got new people. So I mean, I think that's a point of clarification. I don't think it's going to make that much of a difference on who's going to want to live here or not. I mean, it's, it's, it's a designation and it's clarification, and I like the tractor too, so.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but Councilman Terry wants to do some more research on it, and you wanted to think more on it, Brian, so maybe a postpone until next time?
Okay.
I think.
All right, well, I move to, what's the, what's the, what's the verbiage on it? Table it until the next?
Or you could move to direct, like, Mayor to get quotes or, you know...
To research more.
Yeah, stuff like that, so she comes, comes back with what you want her to next time, if you want, you can do that too. Or you could table it, so, whatever you want. There's, yeah, there's multiple ways to handle it.
Right, we'll just put it on the next agenda.
That's true.
That's easy. Okay.
Well, I like not taking action.
All right, so I guess we're going to move on and maybe revisit that next time. All right, number six. Discuss and consider documenting and publishing the criteria for being considered in the Town of Poetry for the purposes of voting, trash collection, sales tax, property taxes, and other matters that will affect citizens. We talked a little bit about this last meeting, I know we will be going into executive meeting a little later, so I think we'll just, if it's okay with the council, that we just ask citizens to come speak for this?
Yeah, I was going to suggest if you wanted to hear citizen comments, and then we could go into executive session after that.
Okay, so number six, Shelley Smith, you're a top, Shelley Smith?
No.
No, okay. Kenzie Salisbury?
So, so a council member can make that motion, but they may not necessarily take action afterwards, so I just don't want to promise something that may not happen, so...
My clarification and probably the citizens, the, the letter, the memorandum that you sent us is what we're going to discuss in the executive session. At that point, can we discuss that in open session?
Yeah, it's your choice too, so...
Yeah, so I would want to hear the citizen comments after we discuss it.
Okay, that's fine. I, I'm sorry, so you want to, what was your...
I would like to hear the citizen comments after we come out here and discuss our closed, our executive session in open session.
Okay, so does everyone else concord, or do we need to vote on that, or?
Um, it's really going to be a determination of you, Mayor, so if, if you're okay with going into executive now...
I mean, they're going to, it's, it's another agenda item, number 10, reconvene and consider, so they're, they're going to have the ability to comment there as well. So I would just say, anybody who signed up for six also gets to speak to 10.
Okay, so I think it would be commons, it would be good for us to, anyone who signed up for number six would also get to speak at number 10. We'll just kind of move that down, so after we've been in executive closed session, we'll come out and then you can speak to that. Okay? All right, so is there any comments on this at this time then by council? Okay, number seven.
So we'll, we can go into executive now.
Oh, we would. Yeah, okay. All right, so, yes, can we take a break first? Yeah, okay. Five-minute recess. Call to order. We'll resume in order to go into executive session. In accordance with the Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, the Town Council will recess into executive session, which is a closed meeting, to discuss the following. 551071, consultation with attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter regarding legal residency. So you're welcome to hang out here some more, and we're going to go back here into the church sanctuary.
State what time it is when we came back?
It is 9:20 PM. I think we have number, we have several citizens who want to speak to this issue, so Shelley Smith, did you want to speak?
No, we need to know what sort of losses.
Okay. Okay, so I believe that we would like, we have, can I say that? That what we discussed?
Yeah, I'll let you do it.
Okay, why don't you say?
Yeah, why don't you just kind of give them as much information as we're allowed?
Okay, so executive session is for the city attorney to give advice to the legal counsel that can't be given in open session because it jeopardizes my duty to that governing body. So not everything that was said and discussed in executive session can legally be disclosed in public. So I know some of the council members will discuss certain things, but I just wanted to throw that caveat out there, the public's not entitled to know everything that occurs in executive, so I just wanted to just let everybody know that piece of information before we get started.
Okay, Councilmember Vincent is going to summarize what we discussed.
So basically, nothing about who's a resident, where county, where city lines are drawn, who's a registered voter, is 100% black and white. So with that being the case, we're going to have to, not have to, but we get to listen to you guys, and then we get to make up some rules about who lives where as far as being a voter, who's a voter, who's not a voter, et cetera. So it's going to be up to us to make the rules for the Town of Poetry within the very, very loose boundaries established by the state.
So to, let me jump in where Brian left off, so we're not going to do that tonight, and we're not going to do it in the next week or so, but we are going to work on it because I think this is a point of confusion for certainly myself, and the intent here is not to undo our town, the intent is to... The intent is to nail down the boundaries of the town. Because one of the things I figured out, looking at the map, is in the CAD systems, there are a few discrepancies, nothing conspiracy, but just where the boundary is slightly different, right? So I, as a citizen, would be inclined to go look at Hunt County CAD and say, is my parcel in or out? And if it's not drawn correctly, I might get confused. And so one of the things we're going to do is clean that map up. To Brian's point and to Emily's, Emily gave us sort of case law and legal opinion on what determines a resident and it, I think, completely confused me because the law doesn't have a clear definition of what a resident is. It means different things in different court cases and we can just pick and choose. So basically, the onus, as Brian said, is on us to define what a resident of the town of poetry is. In other words, is it, if any part of your primary residence is in the town, does your house need to be? Does your porch need to be? Does your whatever? And so what we're going to do is we're going to, outside of this meeting, assign the task of coming up with an initial definition that you will hear from us, maybe at the next meeting, which will be the starting ground for us establishing who lives in the town, who's subject to taxes, who's subject to franchise fees, who's subject to whatever the town. Because we feel like the foundation that our town is built on, although it, it's, it was well-intended, because of technology and other things, it's gotten a little messed up. And I know, I'm an engineer, if I find one flaw in your design, then I know I'm going to find more, okay? So suddenly, everything is up for question. So for me, the map is really, really important, but also the definition is going to be important. So we're going to come back and you will hear us in an open discussion, a workshop, talk about the definition and we'll listen to you, we'll make adjustments, we'll figure this out. And in the end, we'll come up with something that will be the definition that I don't believe is going to be hated by most. I think most people will agree with it. And that's going to help our vendors who don't know whether to charge us trash fees or not. It's going to help just all kinds of things going down the road.
Okay, so we talked about having, coming back next month and having a workshop and then a regular session after that so we can address some of these things. We've slotted two council members to maybe make some definitions and then we'll work that out with the attorney and then a couple of them to go and work on the cleaning up the discrepancies. This was the voted on map, the approved map. We've got some CAD maps that have some errors, so we're going to clean that up a bit to help. And that'll help P&amp;Z too, so.
And just to be sure, we discussed having the council members do those things. We still have to vote, we cannot vote in executive session. You guys have to be watching while we vote on anything.
Okay, so Citizen Shelley Smith, would you like to speak and give us your?
Yeah, and it would be helpful if you would give us input on the map, if you have any thoughts there or on the definition, because we're going to go away and start working on something and it would be helpful to have, you know, your thoughts and ideas. So when we come back, we're a little closer to something that's good.
Okay, so this really confuses me. So now we're talking about different criteria than what was originally considered to be the town of poetry. So the things that we voted on before?
For defining residencies, case law does a bad job of defining residency. Is it your domicile? Is it where you sleep at night? Is it where you file homestead exemptions? What we learned in this meeting is there is not a definition and it is up to the council to make that definition.
Okay, so the voters list that was published on the website, is that the voters list now?
That was the voters list at that time. That was provided by the county officials. That's by their definition, what they said was a voter. Now, we're taking on the task of defining what is a voter for the town of poetry moving forward.
Okay, because on that list, you know, all of the people in the ETJ are on that list.
Not all of them, not all of them.
The majority of them. The majority of people that I've talked to that were told they weren't allowed to vote are on that list.
So I talked with the attorney who helped with that list and both election administrators, Tandy Smith and Jeannie Ash. And they, when they adjudicate any questionable, they have a board that is paid. They come in, they, most of those people who were provisional ballots did get to vote. There was maybe a handful that she said did not. So, but they, the way that their attorney's definition is that if any part of your property, primary residence, not a rental home, not a secondary home, your primary residence is in the town limit, then you get to vote. So if any part of it, okay, that's where it was broadened. So each county broadened that from the initial incorporation vote.
So it's changed significantly since the original?
Well, okay, so as I mentioned, so our initial incorporation, Jim Shepherd was our attorney and he had that, you know, his view was that it had to be within, your residence, your primary residence had to be within the 311 feet or whatever was on the map, the 300, 411, or 500. So that's his position and he felt like that it had to be within that area. So that was, now the counties, though, they said, no, we don't agree with that. So they expanded that. Now, it is up to what we're learning from our council is that it is up to the current council to decide what that definition is going forward. And it's not written in stone. It is very, as Councilmember Fowler said.
Are you going to publish the original criteria at the same time you publish the, the current, the new criteria? So we can see where it varied? Because I think that would be really important to kind of know where we started and where we ended up because the people out here kind of need to know that.
I guess the legal council, I mean, and we don't want it to be confused, confusing to folks, but I guess we would call legal counseling.
Well, I think you just list, here's the 2020 rules and here's the 2022 rules.
So that incorporation election was primarily done by the commissioners courts of each county and so the town's not necessarily going to have access to all of that information or want to post that on their website. And so moving forward, they're talking about making a list that everybody can truly abide by at that point.
I get that, I get that. I'm just saying that what we thought was truth before, we'd like to know what's, what's the difference between 2020 truth and 2022 truth.
I see what you're saying. You want to know the difference and that helps define it.
Yeah, I think that'd be important. Are we talking only about number six right now and then I sit down and come back for number seven? Or do I get nine minutes for six, seven, and eight?
Eight is different. I think right now, Emily, would it be okay to combine six and seven?
Yes, we can combine public comment on six and seven.
So we get six minutes.
Are you timing this?
I don't think anybody's started the timer, Shelley.
Just checking. I don't, I don't know when I'm going to get cut off, so. All right, so the, so what you said on the CAD map, I think you said it. The CAD map has some discrepancies in it. So what, my next question was the Hunt and the Kaufman City limit maps, to the best of your knowledge, are they correct? And you're saying, no, they're not correct.
Well, I haven't scrubbed all of them. I've only done a few little fingers up in the part of town I live in and there's just a little difference in where they say our footprint is and where we say. It's not like the wrong road, it's the right road, but maybe theirs goes a couple hundred feet more or something than ours goes. So we need to, we need to figure that out. So I can't say, if I was guessing, and I've done a lot of that in my career, I would say the map is probably 98% accurate. That's just a wild guess on me. That's not based on anything other than if I can find in two streets, two errors, I'm probably going to find 2% error.
And Shelley, also, the, the city limits is not that map and it's not the CAD map. The city limits is the meets and bounds as described.
It's a survey.
It's a survey. So we have visual representation, but just like your property line has, you know, the meets and bounds, the city has the same. So to get to the exact truth, that's really what we're going to have to compare to the visual maps.
Okay, so, but the Hunt and Kaufman County CAD maps, the parcels, like you click on a parcel and it tells you who lives there and all that kind of stuff, that is more or less correct?
Well, yeah, I'm not, I'm not taking issue, Mike Jaffe, with CAD's representation of parcels because they have deeds and things, they know where our property is. It's the line that they drew on top of their map that we sent them the definition of that not, and it may not be that we sent them bad data, it may be their people just did a key in error or something. But like dots moved slightly and so as an engineer, I expect to go in and see the same thing everywhere I look. I mean, if every time I brought up a map of Dallas for driving help, it was different, it would drive me nuts because the highway always needs to be in the same place.
Sure, okay, so on number six, you're talking about the criteria for the purposes of voting, trash, trash collection, blah, blah, blah. And property taxes. If it gets to the point of property taxes, is it basically the percentage of your property that is within the city limit that you would pay the percentage of it? So you can figure your taxes?
I would, I would have a hard time saying that definitely. What I would, what I would be more comfortable saying is that the assessed value of the property in the town would be what the property tax would be based on, not a percentage of what the county charges.
But it's only the part that's in the city limit, it's not the part that counts.
Right, the town can only tax on what is in the town limit.
So here's my question, somebody, let's say somebody has, you know, 10 acres of frontage. Now, they don't, but, and the next guy has one acre. So the one guy with 10 acres is paying 311 on the 10 acres across the front and the other guy's paying 311 of the one acre. So there's a difference in what they would pay for the tax.
Assuming that all of the property is of equal value, again, there's a lot of nuance here, that all of those 11 acres are of equal value, then yes, the one who has the 10 acres of equal value would be charged 10 times more than the person who has the one acre.
So the people in the 511 are going to be paying a higher percentage for the same width of land?
Well, you pay tax by the acre or by the value, so yeah, if they have more acreage, they're going to pay more tax.
They have 511 in the city, whereas other people have 311 and it was arbitrarily chosen that they will now get to pay more than the people?
And let me, this is, this is come up a couple of times.
We have zero property tax at this, so.
Well, as, yeah, but this is something you need to think about.
This has come up a couple of times and I want to make sure that it's clear that we did not incorporate, we incorporated property, not just road frontage. So yes, the person who has the 511, assuming the values are all the same, will be char, will have a higher tax if a tax is enacted of somebody who only has 311 of frontage.
And let me jump in, Shelley, because you probably know this, but I'm getting a lot of questions from people between meetings thinking that their current tax bill is going to be reduced by the amount of the poetry tax years from now when we do it. But it's not, okay? It's going to be in addition to. So there will be another line, just like I pay school tax, I pay this tax, I pay that tax, there's going to be a town of poetry, but it's only going to be for the acres that are in the town, it's not, or house or whatever structures, it's not everything.
I'm just really grateful I don't live on one of the 511 roads that y'all chose.
Thank you, Shelley. All right.
Tara, let me, let me just make another point real quick because, and we talked about this a little in executive session. This council owns, the fact that we're a town and we're incorporated, okay? But this council did not cause us to be incorporated, right? We were elected as a consequence, good or bad, of the town being formed and needing leadership, right? So we chose to step up and run for the positions we're running. We didn't create the map, we didn't define the rules, but we do have the burden now that we inherited an elephant, right? We have to put up fencing and feed and other things commensurate with owning an elephant. So I want to make that clear just because I think sometimes people come at us individually or collectively thinking it's our fault. We did not, we all have different views on the incorporation, but as a council, this council did not form this town, okay? This town formed and then this council was formed and we're here to hopefully, you know, do a good job of driving what we're driving, but we didn't do that.
Well, and it was the 76% of voters, the majority voted to become a town, so.
And that's fine, I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying, the council didn't form the town.
I just want to tell Shelley, you're in Kaufman County, right? You have a new CAD ID on your front property. We've learned that through P&amp;Z. Kaufman County has already assigned new property ID numbers to everybody in Kaufman County. So when the appraisals come out this year, you'll, you'll get two or maybe more, I don't know how your property is divided, property IDs and you'll be able to move on forward knowing that that's the assessed value and then if there's ever a tax, you'll be able to multiply that. But you have a new property ID.
So are you saying that one plot that has the city limit sign or that the town limit line going through it now has two property IDs?
Yes, sir.
So they've calculated the portion.
That's dandy.
Yeah. Okay, so Kenzie Salisbury, you can speak to both six and seven.
Six minutes, correct?
Yes.
Thank you all for taking that task on because that is going to be a huge one. So to make sure that I'm understanding, and as of right now, there's no current list, I guess, or no list of poetry citizens because y'all are going to be creating the rules and the definitions that then consist of that. All right, so with that being said, what about all these things that are, they're already collecting franchise fees? So the trash and the electric and all that. What if y'all create the definition and then now there's this new list of citizens? What's going to happen with those franchise fees that's already been collected? And they're, say they're, they just happen to not be in the town. Who's going to reimburse the citizens that were charged the franchise fees that?
Emily, isn't that, I mean, that's kind of a grandfather kind of thing, right?
I mean, every time we change something, we can't go back and make it appear it was that way all along.
Yeah, exactly. So the rules they establish, we can't apply them retroactively. And like I've kind of been saying, like a lot of what happened in that incorporation election isn't a result of any of these people up here. The commissioners courts have to sign off on everything you do. So what they're doing and proposing right now is coming up with a list of rules, basically a policy that would apply moving forward.
Okay, so if they come to find out that they're not in the town limits, does that mean that they can stop paying those franchise fees?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the next one is, so you know, you're in the task of making a comprehensive map, that would also kind of be halted until y'all come up with the rules and regulations of?
Well, the, the map won't because the map is simply a visual representation of a survey, which is very exact points. So I just want to make sure those are right. So for example, with Shelley, they've gone through and figured out what portion is in poetry and given it an ID. I just want to make sure that they calculated the right portion, right? Because if that line is off by 10 feet, she could get an extra quarter acre or whatever, so that's my job. The definition, the house is where the house is. If it's outside the line and the house is required to establish township, it's out or in. I'm just going to give them a black and white line and then our definition will be applied against that.
My suggestion is to not pass any franchise fees or anything going forward until y'all have that proper list because, you know, you don't know actually who are citizens. Thanks.
Did you state your address?
Oh, 20571 North Highway 34. Thanks, Terrell.
Emily, would it be our job as a, as a city to reach back out to the vendors that are charging them and say, okay, this, this is not, this is?
Yes.
So right now, I get four electric bills at one property. Only, the house is the only thing that touches and might touch the city limit. So is it the city's job now to call TV, our FEC and say, hey, quit charging those three other franchise fees?
So the only franchise fee the town has is the solid waste.
Electric.
We have the, we have the FEC and the Encore franchise fees, the 4%.
So if they're doing it to me, how many more citizens are they charging?
No, we, we would need to reach out to all of our vendors and provide them the updated.
So depending on the definition, it might, so I mean, for all these years, I've been paying Encore to Terrell, okay? On one, one of three. So I don't know what their determination was, but Terrell was getting my money every month, $10, $11. But it was only one of three. And are you getting a fee on every one of yours?
I have four meters, well, one's a lot, so three meters and they all.
I have four meters. Well, one's a lot, so three meters, and they all get taxed. They all get a franchise fee, and only one of them's questionable. So now, as an advocate for our citizens, how many of those would be in charge of additional franchise fees?
So that secretary is going to be busy.
So like the meter, like that second part of it's a separate question, but as far as like responsibility from the town to let our vendors know what the decision's been made, that it is our job to do that. So once we have something in stone, we'll send it out to all of those people, let them know if they have questions, who our point of contact is for discussions.
How is the electric company going to know where that line of demarcation is?
Well, we're going to, for, I don't have all of the answers right now, so I will write that one down for you and let you know.
I know they work very hard.
It's a very tough subject, with not a lot of precedence, so.
Yeah.
Possibly charge people franchise fees, but that meter is not in the town proper.
By the definition that you guys vote on.
Now, we're pushing it into the ETJ, though.
Right, but the, one of the byproducts of this effort should be a list of names and addresses that we can look at and, and argue about, but also that we can share with vendors, right? So they can look up my address and say, Mike is in or Mike is out, because I'm sure at least some of them have to be a little confused right now.
But my four bills are on the same address, so it can't only solely be defined by an address. There has to be a geographical reference.
That's something in our definition that we need to include. Does it include your barn, your house, your shop?
Okay, we'll put a Terry clause in there. If it's Terry, include everything.
I'm representing everybody else that has a building that's outside the town proper that's in the ETJ. There's a geographical line that's drawn that the surveyors made, and we have to stick to that. If not, we're imposing a franchise fee in the ETJ, and do we have that right?
Well, I got it. That's, that's why we're going to go back and forth on the definition. So you need to throw your input into whoever gets assigned the definition committee, and we'll go from there.
Okay, Patrick Smith. And you're signed up for both six and seven, so you can have up to six minutes.
Okay, my first question is for Emily. You stated that not everything can be disclosed, and I understand that, and I appreciate that. But as one of the citizens, I hope, maybe, I don't know, of Poetry Texas, as maybe a voter of Poetry Texas, can you disclose what are the issues that may affect voters or taxpayers that are going to be considered?
So I, I appreciate your question. My response is that I represent the council, not any of you all individually, and legally, I cannot disclose what occurs in executive session.
Okay, well.
So Patrick, we can, I mean, we can paraphrase back to you as best we can, if you'll help us.
Okay, and I'm not, I'm saying, how do the voters find out what's going on? If you say, you can't say anything, that's fine, but your words were, the voters are not entitled to know everything, okay? Well, what are we entitled to know? Does that come from the mayor, from one of the council members?
So that followed my comment where I said some of the council members were going to comment on executive session, and I don't know what they all plan to say.
Okay, well, then my question to the council members, what are the issues that can be disclosed? What are the issues that the taxpayers need to be aware of?
The, the two main issues are, who is a voter, and where's the line?
Okay, and when you say the line, you're talking about the line on the map to determine property taxes potentially, and?
Areas of residence, et cetera.
Okay. And how can the public be involved in this?
You can definitely send us comments and opinions. We have our, our emails. If anybody would like to talk to me, then that would be fantastic as well. I'm sure, I mean, I've seen a lot of unsolicited opinion on next door, so I know that, that, you know, that's a, a way that people are expressing feedback, so there's, there's a number of methods.
But please show up at the next meeting especially, because that's when we're going to be voting on it, and we really want, I mean, that's when we're going to be coming through with some ideas, and we really want your opinion on the ideas. So next meeting especially is going to be where you can really make the biggest difference.
Okay, well, can the council members this evening say on the record, so people can watch it themselves and know, what, what exactly are they going to consider as far as the issue of whether you're a legal resident of the Town of Poetry or not?
Well, the ca- the case law that our attorney has given us has it all over the gamut. So because it's not, it's not easily defined, and you go to one county, it's one thing, you go to another county, it's another thing, it's really the gamut. So like Councilmember Fowler said initially, you know, it might, the definition of resident is not cut and dry. It is one of those things in the area of the law that is gray. So this council will have to decide what they want the definition going forward for the Town of Poetry to be.
And when the council considers that issue, will they review and give weight to representations that were made to the voters before the incorporation election and before the election of the council members and the mayor?
Representations is a widely defined word, so could you narrow that down for me?
Well, I don't know how I can. In the events leading up to the incorporation, there were written materials that were distributed to potential voters about what all this meant, who could vote, who couldn't vote, who would have to pay taxes, who wouldn't have to pay taxes. Then we had these, I don't know, infomercial type things in this very building where questions and answers were, were, questions were asked and answers were made to the voters. And so is that going to be part of this mix that we're working on now? What, what were people told?
I don't anticipate that it would be.
Okay. Does anybody else feel differently about that?
Do you have something published that you could send me? I, I will field all your emails, because yes, I, I'm a representative for the, for the citizens who elected me, and I, I want to know everything. That, that could, because, because like Tara mentioned, Harris County finds it as where you file your home exemption. Another county, in another case filed it where you sleep. So we have to make that decision on what we are going to claim as residency. And, and if people were influenced or told that they would never be a resident, go vote for it, I mean, it'd have to be overwhelming evidence. But yeah, I want to hear everything you have to say about it.
Yeah, likewise, Patrick. I think, I, I don't, I mean, I remember some of that, but I didn't keep, you know, file folders on it, but.
I was here for most of those meetings as well.
Yeah, at a minimum, it would be good food for thought. Maybe they were good ideas. I don't even remember. That's too long ago. But, you know, I think we're, I mean, we're just like you. We just got a really boring assignment, but we're just sort of seeking our way through the darkness here. So yeah, I would, I would also like to hear those if you want to email them.
And I'm more than willing to share with you the written materials I have. But I think the, the one I'm more concerned about is all these town hall meetings where voters got together, and they were held at various times, and representations were made to the voters on, this is what you, this town is. This is what we're trying to sell you on. And I believe at least one of those, and I would think probably all of them, were videotaped, and I don't have access to those videotapes.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Six minutes has already gone by.
Yes, sir.
I was watching.
All right, well, then I'll be back for nine, ten. Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You can also talk to any of us after. I've talked to you as long as you want.
Absolutely. Thank you, Patrick. And did you, I'm sorry, did you state your address?
I wrote it down, but I need to state it, too.
Yes, sir.
One eight seven three zero, Farm Market Road fifteen sixty-five, Poetry, Texas, seven five one six zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Catherine Hartwig. I didn't see, oh, you are on six and seven, so you will get six minutes as well.
I, I don't have six minutes worth of stuff. I'm just going to say thank you guys for tackling this very difficult topic. We have a town that's fluid, and people get really uncomfortable when things change. And it changed when it became a town, and now the definition of the town is changing, and it's hard. It's hard to make everybody happy. And I really, really appreciate what y'all are up against. So cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
One, I, let me throw in there, Catherine, I appreciate your comments. I, I wouldn't see it so much as we're starting from scratch. I think we're just trying to merge, because through the three elections we've had, different entities have been in charge, and they've sort of done their little twist. And so in my mind at least, we're not starting over. We're not throwing out everything. We're just trying to bring these together, because each of us, I think, is walking around with a different impression of what living in the town means and entitles and, and requires, and I just don't like that. It should be all the same. We agreed on how we spell poetry. We should agree on where the boundaries are.
We're just fine tuning.
I agree, and it's, it's always a process. And one of the things that we refer to are the planning and zoning documents, is they're living documents. These things are going to keep changing. And I don't want you guys to get discouraged if you come back a year from now and we have to do another redefinition, because things change. And to keep us poetry means that we may do some tap dancing when pressures come from outside and try to make us change. So stand tall. It's good.
Thank you, Catherine. Did you state your, you did state your address?
Nine, twenty, twenty-one, ninety-nine eighty-eight, County Road twenty-four thirty.
Okay. Thank you. I'm working on it. All right, Mike Griffin. So I didn't see, I saw you sign up for six, but not seven, so you'll have three minutes, sir.
Mike Griffin, six two four seven, Dry Creek Run and Poetry. My initial question was going to be directed to Emily as to whether or not there is a legal definition of a, a resident who is able to vote. And I understand now that, that that was discussed in executive session, so I'm not allowed to, to know that.
You are allowed to know that. There, there is not a single definition.
Well, there, there isn't one, but there are lots of them, so it's really the same time.
So there is no single definition of that. And, and I, I find it personally very disheartening that an incorporation election was held that impacts people's lives and fortunes, and there's no clear definition of who's able to vote, whether they're impacted or not. I pray that the, the workshop will bring some clarity, but, but it's just, I find it very disheartening that an incorporation election was held and an election for public officials was held without a clear understanding of who's even eligible to vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. No, one, one comment on that is that there is no single definition, but each of those elections were held with the definition of that agency at the time. So we're simply trying to define what it is for poetry moving forward.
Glenn Strauss. Glenn Strauss?
He's gone.
I think he left. Okay. All right. So that's all on six and seven. So now we have on, I guess we need to discuss, are we going to move that we do a subcommittee of two, maybe?
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to motion for a committee formation and then scheduling of a workshop.
Okay, we discussed that, I think, Councilmember White and Vincent were going to maybe handle description of what a residence is, and then Councilmember Jaffe was going to try and work with myself and maybe Ms. Dorothy Dillon on the map, getting some of the discrepancies cleaned up. That would be important. And then working with, of course, the Stovall Survey Company as well. So do we have a motion for that?
So, so is that what we discussed, that Vincent and Simeon's going to define what a residence is?
Well, they're going to come up with the initial definition. We got to start somewhere.
You got to start somewhere.
Yeah, we'll bring one to y'all, is all.
They're going to come up with a straw man, and then we'll talk about it at the workshop and flesh it out. But we got to start somewhere, and six of us ain't going to write a definition, so.
So y'all will have some loose interpretations or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring something for the council to consider.
And maybe three choices.
And change if necessary.
Because we're going into a workshop, so we can beat it up, chew it up, spit it out.
So do we have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we just discussed about the people taking on the responsibilities, and that we are trying to get together information for the next meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion that two council members, namely Councilmember White and Councilmember Vincent, would work on some sort of preliminary definition to bring to the next workshop, and then Councilmember Jaffe and myself would work on cleaning up some of the map discrepancies. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Yes, sir.
Is that number six or seven?
It's really for both, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. That's unusual. Okay. Okay, so moving on to number eight. Okay, and number eight, it says, discuss and consider a telecommunications franchise. This actually, I think Councilmember Fowler maybe had brought this on to the agenda?
Yeah, someone that asked me.
Is worded a little differently?
Yeah, I don't remember, but, but basically the, we have, I hate to call it a name, because it really doesn't matter, but we have people using our right-of-ways, our city streets now, the Warren County, putting in fiber optics. So their question was, you know, one, do we allow them access to our right-of-ways without any, one, permitting that allows them to access a street, and two, is this another franchisable, or what, I don't know what the word is, is another place that we can get franchise monies for, because they are charging our citizens for a service they provide? So I, I think it's two parts. One, we might, might need a workshop item to talk about allowing people to use our right-of-ways, if that's permitting, or if it's just an open permissible for each vendor. And then two, is this another franchise grab for the fees that they're charging our citizens?
Let me jump on that one, because I did some research and talked to some people early on about this, because we were looking at possible taxes and, I mean, I'm calling them taxes, but they're not really. Their franchise fees kind of affect the same way. And, yeah, we can do it. We can definitely do it, at least for telecommunications. And I was actually filing those forms and just hit a roadblock, and I had a bunch of emails because I contacted the person who actually wrote the laws for the right-of-way, or at least worked with the, is the primary contact for it. And it was, you know, complicated just because most of the franchise fees were calculated based off of nineteen ninety-eight taxes, which there were none for the town, obviously. So they were having to calculate it based off of towns that are similar to us in population, that are either in the same counties as us or adjacent. But the main problem is that they had to have a population estimate that was exact and legal, and that's where I ran into a roadblock. It couldn't go any farther, because the, he referenced me to go to a organization, the TDC Texas Population Estimate Program, and they didn't have any data on us. We incorporated too recently. And there's still some question about our map. So I think this comes after we nail down exactly who's in the town, how many population we have, because we have to give them a solid estimate. We don't have a solid definition of residents. And then also, I kind of, I agree with Kenzie that probably not best to look at new franchises until we know who's in the town. So to follow up on that, is telecommunication protected on rates for franchises? Do you know any?
It depends on if you're an I-LAC, a C-LAC. There's all kinds. One of my, I, I worked for, I ran a, a long-distance service provider, and we had a sister company that was a local phone company. So I'm fairly familiar with those regulations as well.
Yeah, we just, for one of our other cities, we just got notice from the PUC of their statewide increases, and it just, it goes into effect like normal, the same for everybody across the state, so.
So do we want to discuss in a workshop, maybe not tonight, since it's already ten o'clock, if we should allow access to our right-of-ways, or is there permitting?
Well, my concern is, okay, I know that it, potential revenue source, and every revenue source will hopefully help us avoid a property tax, right? That's my, my concern, my, my main thrust on that. However, you know, when you drive down now twenty-four fifty-eight, However, you know, when you drive down now 2458, 249, well, it's mainly 2458, you have, you have these little boxes now, the one-by-four-foot green boxes that I guess a company has put in. And I know that it's welcome because I can get high-speed internet, but we have boxes now in our right-of-way and they're every hundred yards or so. And so that's a concern in a sense. We kind of need to know, like if we're going to, you know, if we work on the road, for instance, we, we need to know that that's there. I mean, if, so I, and I think Bruce, he works for Spectrum. He piped in on this on a private message to me and he's basically said, you know, he thinks that we should actually have a permit on, on this kind of thing so that we know what's in our area, so that we don't end up with, God forbid, a lawsuit or something if someone hits the wrong, you know, hits the thing and breaks it for all these citizens. We just kind of need to be aware. And so a small little permit would allow us maybe to do that. So that's another, throw another thing out there. So it's not just about trying to get revenue, in my mind.
Well, the thing I would bring up again, Terry, too, is that, you know, I am reminded every time I pay my Farmers Electric bill that that franchise fee didn't come from Farmers Electric. It's on my bill and I make my little contribution every month. So if we put a fee on there, it's going to be on the internet customer's bill because the telecom company isn't going to pay it. They're just going to mark the bill up. So to me, every time we say franchise fee, I feel like we need to look out in the audience and say, you know, brace yourself, here comes another one. Now, they're little, five dollars, ten dollars, whatever, up to this point. But, but we are getting money from ourselves. We're not getting it from, you know, Big Brother or.
Yeah, and according to Emily, and she's right, I looked into it, a franchise fee is not a tax.
Right. But it sure feels like one.
Well, we can debate on if we're taxing the people by instituting franchise fees. So I just run some simple math on, on my franchises I paid this month. Fourteen ninety for electric, six fifty for trash. With not having enough historical data, let's just call that a 12-month runout. It's $256.
Right.
If we have 691 unique homes in this town that we've referred to a lot of times, that's $177,000 tax that we've put on the people. If we have 1,060, the new number that Tara mentioned tonight that's going out in, in the mailers, that's $272,000 if this town looked like me. There's a lot of variables. But that's some real quick numbers on, on to say, okay, we legally haven't charged a tax, but we have just accrued a large sum of money on a tax, on franchise fees.
Well, I'd like to see, I mean, we'll see as we progress. I mean, currently, we have nowhere near that, obviously. So we'll see. This first year is really a testing ground for us. We'll see actually how, and it seems to be $7,000 to $8,000 every quarter is, at least on the electric franchise fees.
Well, FEC has just now started collecting, right?
Well, they collected one, so November and December. So it was.
They at least paid it, whether or not they collected it.
I just took a snapshot of this month.
Yeah.
But they're going to be similar. I mean, you know, rates go up and down. Our usage goes up and down.
So in my mind, you know, if, if citizens are going to pay between $200 and $258 a month, then maybe, maybe we can forego a property tax. If we can fund the town just by those simple fees, I mean, hallelujah. I'm excited about that.
I really, really do believe, I do not think we need a property tax and I will not vote for it. And just so you know, the, the money.
You voted for a zero tax now. I'm going to hold you back.
We voted for zero.
You did vote, I remember.
Yeah, well, you know what I mean? Not voting for us spending money on property tax or incurring any from our people. The other thing about the franchise phone tax is that it, it really doesn't give much. It, for the city of Italy that has almost exactly the same amount of population, they got $2,480 for a year and then it lowered to 2,271 the next year. I'm guessing that's because less landlines, which I believe incur more, if I understood correctly. And I just, you know, if your numbers are right there, then that's less than 1% of what we're already making.
Yeah, that's what I was told.
So it's not a big-ticket item. And I sure wouldn't push it before we get our population and residents nailed down if we ever decide to pick this up.
But I think the, the second part of that conversation is, should we know what's going into our town's property? And I think that answer for me is 100% yes. Because at some point, we're going to have greater responsibility over the right-of-way and directional boring and other things. And so I think at least forcing them to give us a copy of their plans, whatever, whether we charge them or give them a permit or whatever, something that forces them to come and say, hey, I'm going to be tunneling down your right-of-way and putting little green boxes, you know, so we can say, no, they need to be blue or they need to, you know, be further apart.
Yeah, exactly. That'll fall on P&amp;Z at one, at one point. We'll, P&amp;Z will report to us and then we'll, we'll service that commission. And we'll say, okay, you can have these pedestals, but they have to be surrounded by this type of vegetation. I mean, so, so yeah, the longer we, we wait on that kind of stuff, which is not right in front of us, the, the more of those we're going to have.
Right. So I'd like to see us separate those two points. A franchise fee for telecom should be a completely independent discussion of, should we start a permitting for right-of-way access? I think that one, to me, is more important.
So do we need to talk about that in a workshop? If it's permitting, if it's?
Well, and get input from P&amp;Z because you guys are, you know the lay of the land better than the average. So, because you're digging around in it right now.
Emily, is, is permitting like that or along right-of-way? Is that part of P&amp;Z or is that, is that something that could be handled separately?
I, I have seen P&amp;Z involvement, but it would be passed by the council ultimately. And I don't know if it legally would even have to go to P&amp;Z. A lot of times, people run things through P&amp;Z just to get their recommendation regardless. But it is, would be very vital that you guys do adopt, whether it's permitting or whatever program you want to, we do need to know what's going in there and how they are putting things in there. And if they're going to take things out, they need to restore the property to present, to previous conditions.
I did have one email, I didn't have on the Monster, but I did have one email requesting, hey, do you have, do we need to get a permit for the Town of Poetry? And currently, we have nothing. So it might be something that we do need to address. It could be very simple, like, but we just kind of need to know where the lines are going. And they, he was saying basically, you know, they give you a map, you know, we request a map of where your line will be so that we're aware.
And I did have a question for you, Emily. What do we have to do to set that up? Do we have to sign up with the right-of-way participation? Do anything with the Public Utility Commissions of Texas? Or can we just set this up like any other ordinance?
So I believe that you just set it up like any other ordinance. But with you saying all that, it makes me want to go and look into it just to make sure. So I will report back to you on that one. But I, I don't think there's much besides adopting an ordinance. But if there is, I'll know and then next time I can let you guys know.
All right.
Okay. So I think we have finished discussing that number eight. It sounds like we're going to push it on down the road to get some things firmed up, but we might bring it back on, separate it between a permit and looking at the franchise fee separately. So it looks like we need to skip to number 11 because we've already covered some of the things. For number eight. Oh, okay. We certainly did. Okay. Kenzie Salisbury. Okay. Oh, well, he'll, so I have, I'm sorry. Next on the list, I have Shelley Smith. No? Okay, Patrick Smith and then Bruce Seet. Yeah.
So I'll, I can address both of those issues. So permitting, well, I'll start with that franchise. So the telecommunication franchise fee, that is basically your landlines. I always recommend not to go after that one just because only ones are going to have landlines is the older citizens. And franchise fees are about 5%, is usually a franchise fee. So most of us with cell phones, you're not paying franchise fee. So, yeah, let me get to that. So internet, you cannot touch. That has been passed the law, a Freedom Internet Act, couple of years back, they did that one. But video, you can tax. Home phone, you cannot just tax. But with video, that's kind of where you, you'll probably get all video franchise. I'm pretty sure that'd be the next one that's going to hit the list. I mean, if you got telecommunications now, you got power. Next one's going to be video, which is your DirecTV dish network. Same thing. It's all regulated by state franchise fees. Since the city franchise did way back in 2011, I believe it was. It was cities require, we, we, we want you to feed our city hall, our schools. That was a city franchise usually. Well, state came in, they, all, all of our, these big companies, Comcast, Time Warner, went in there and we pretty much got changed where it's state franchise fees, which is usually 5%. That's on telephone, that's on video also. But for internet, you can't really tax them. They, they got, they passed the act, I want to say that was 2017, maybe 18 area, that they, they got freedom of internet. About the same time when the franchise fee started noticing they were dropping the video because everybody's switching to Netflix, Hulu. That's already been passed. We can't franchise feed Hulu, Netflix, anything like that. So a lot of cities were trying to go after the, the internet and our, whatever you call those people that pay, pretty much pays the under-the-table-type stuff to governors.
What do you say? Politicians?
Lobbyists?
No, yeah. It pays us politicians, lobbyists. Our, our big corporation lobbyists, they went after that to block it because that's where everybody's going with those internet services. So with the video, I mean, obviously, you're probably going to go for that. That's 5% of everybody's bill. And, and then it goes back to, they're going to hit everybody because like my company, they ain't going to know who, what's in the city limits and what's not in the city limits. We just got addresses and that's it. So it's kind of, kind of hard to figure all that out. But for the permitting part, I do recommend, so for us, it's meant to Hunt County, our permit company called DFW, or we have DFW and another company called Kinetic that does these permitings, that does all our permitting for us. They, for Hunt County, they had to do screenshots of Google Earth of where the lines, and we got them all colored, so what's going to be aerial, what's underground. And within, in that area, they explained to how's it ran.
So his time is up, but he's an expert in the field. So I'm going to go ahead and extend that time because he works for Spectrum. This is Bruce Seet, who I was quoting earlier.
So for the cables in the ground, they should be in conduct. Monster, I drove by earlier, they're not in conduct. So if it gets damaged, they're not going to pull new fiber. They're going to dig up the whole ditch and right now, they're plowing. I don't recommend plowing. One of our contractors, they're plowing off a farm market, 22, or sorry, 3211 right now. And the water company hates them right now. They called in locates. They locate there's one spot, they still plowed it, they hit the water line. Not our fault, water company has mislocated. But I don't recommend plowing. That's one big thing.
Can our permit regulate how they?
Yes. You can say you want to bore, you tell how deep you want to bore. For most county roads and city roads, we are at 36 inches.
And we can mandate that it's in conduit, schedule 40, whatever in the permit.
Hey, Bruce, do you have, maybe have an example of a permit that you think is very well-written?
Oh.
That might help us instead of having to re-.
Well, for the county, I can do text dot for the county because even text dot's different. For the county, we just do screenshots and he says, we're going on this pole. It gives us dots where all the poles are at. It's green, green, green line and then where we go underground. We can't, we changed from pole company to another pole provider. We have to go underground. With Encore, they're paying, they don't trim the trees. It's to us to avoid, have to pay for getting tree trimming and they take forever to trim a tree. We're going to go underground on some of that stuff, too. So like back here off of 2316, 2400 area, some of those pole lines go through farmland. I'm not going to run my fiber going through that. One, it's going to get shot if people are bird hunting. Two, we can't get a trailer back there to splice the fiber if it does get damaged. And pulling the fiber, middle of the night, our restore time is get it up fast as can. After about, I believe it's three, four hours, we got, start getting bigwigs on the call, on a conference call, find out why it's taking so long. After eight hours, you're talking about Texas VP level is on the call, wonder why it's not up yet. And that's another reason for having a conduit is to restore time. Like I said, Monster's direct bore or direct plow, not bore. So if that gets cut, like I said, it's going to be a while. Do they have the fiber on hand? Can they be able to replace it real quick? What damage did? The ground's shifting could cause an issue because the fiber is a piece of glass. And if it bends it too much, it snaps.
Okay. So do you, do you maybe have an example that you could share with me?
I don't have one on me. No.
Well, not now, but like you could email me. I know we were communicating earlier. Okay. Thank you so much. And can you state your address?
Bruce Seet, it's going to be 10241 FM 1565. I do recommend the franchise fee. If, if you're going to go for the franchise video, there are companies trying to con, been trying to get permit. They're opening a permit, I put permit status for the City of Poetry. If that's the situation, they got to kind of get going because the legal, our legal team gets involved and they have to go through all the legal process to that. Like City of Will's Point, they do a franchise fee. And we're not even going through Will's Point yet. We're going to be passing through, we're not feeding them yet. But we have to, we had to fill all the paperwork just to get permits.
Just for passing through?
Yeah.
Huh. Okay.
So we're building, we had to pass it to get to certain spots so we can connect all the fibers together.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. That was very informative.
Thank you.
Okay. So it looks like we can, that was the last one, number eight. And we understand that six, seven, and 10 were kind of all combined and then number eight. And so now we're going down to number 11. Discuss and interview applicants for Town Secretary. We had, originally, we had an applicant, but she withdrew her application because of health issues with her husband. And so we have one applicant currently. And she wasn't able to be here tonight because she also is having surgery like at 5:00 in the morning or something and had to go into the hospital. So what we did, we staggered, we had a kind of a 15-minute session with staggering so that we don't have quorum, where we met with her. Each council member was allowed to ask her questions in that session. So that was, what, Saturday morning? So after about two hours of answering questions, I think each, each council member hopefully got a feel for whether they want to have her as our Town Secretary. So we have, in the packet, we have her resume. So her name is Teresa Rita Sholander. She has, up until recently with health issues, been the Assistant Accountant Finance Personal Assistant of a homeowners association. So she has had to deal with, had thick skin, I'm sure. So she has, she is a notary public, licensed and bonded. She's familiar with QuickBooks Pro. She's accustomed to financial reporting. She has had 20 years' experience with Vice President of Finance and Accountant roles. She has a recommendation letter here and there's also another one that came later. So without having to read every little detail, I think she's actually probably overqualified in some aspects, but it is quite impressive. She has attention, meticulous attention to detail. She's highly organized. I find those qualities will be very important. One thing that I, was in the letter that, that he highly recommended her, this was JD Wilson of the Managing Director of Validus, just highly recommended her because he felt like she was not only competent, but extraordinary competent bookkeeper and also could handle quite a workload, but also was exemplary human being, is what he's saying. And that he felt like she was professional and that she was able to keep confidence in, in all kinds of matters. So she, I came across Teresa when she helped with the Spring Festival last year. She was pretty amazing in that she solicited for all of the silent auction gifts. So she solicited and she worked it. And so we had quite a, quite a plethora of gift certificates and gifts from the community businesses. And, and it was, she, it was quite impressive, so.
Are we going to move to closed session for this? I mean, I see that it's, or, I mean, I don't, I don't really know the need. Was that for the other person that didn't end up showing up? Just so that I get this straight.
So we can listen to, I guess, the comments of our citizens, but out of consideration for, like if you were applying for a job, you wouldn't want it to be spread on video in front of everyone, what we talk about. So out of consideration for this prospective employee, that's why it also. that's why it also can go into executive session, to be held in private. So, but I don't see that we have any citizens that wanna talk on that. So, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, the Town Council will recess into executive session, a closed meeting, to discuss the following. Personal matters deliberation regarding the appointment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer or employee, colon, Town Secretary. The time is now 10:23, and we're gonna head back into the topple again. Time is 10:27, and we're reconvening to our regular meeting and session to consider appointing the Town Secretary.
I make a motion, we extend an offer to Teresa Sholander for the job of Town Secretary.
I have a second.
Okay, so, we have a... Yes, I did.
Did you announce the time?
I did.
Okay, well, here we are.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Mike Joffe, and a second by Councilmember Anderson, to go ahead and extend that application for employment to Teresa Rita Sholander. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. So, we have two, we do have two citizens that want to speak.
But, they've already left.
They've already left, okay. It is late, alright.
Thank you, Abby.
Yes, Abby, thank you. Alright, so, we have general, general public comments, under Jay. Shelley Smith, has she left? Okay, Kenzie Salisbury. Kevin Sinkovich. Okay, Jim Cook, I think he has left. Mike Griffin. Okay, and Glenn Strauss has left, okay. Okay, so... Yeah, there's no one left to clean up, so, meeting adjourned.